It was difficult.
Yeah. She did. They had to call me like, who did this? Who did that? And I was like, what's the fact? Sitting here thinking, my mask break.
You went in and out of clothes twice.
So, how you guys doing?
Right. Turn the TV on.
Only once. How's the new people working out the plant? They getting the hang of things?
I know Ryan. I don't think.
Don't say another word.
Yep. All right, so. Okay, at six o'clock, if everybody could please stand, face the flag.
Applause, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America. In two thirty five later, for which stands one nation underground indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Hannah.
Hey, John Brotherton.
Here.
Moto Johnson.
Here.
Nikki Pettit.
Here.
Mitch Wilson. Joe Robinson.
Here.
Tyler Wilson.
Here.
Andy Graham.
Here.
Okay, I don't know what's going on. Am I following? Can you tell if I'm following you, Hannah?
I'm leaving.
I know. Can you tell if I'm following you?
No. I can't tell if you're following. I can just tell if I'm leaving.
Following is coming next.
Okay. Okay. First item is approval of the agenda. If anybody sees anything, Scott, did you have one change you wanted to make to the agenda?
Yeah, they're on the consent agenda, so we'll do that. We'll get to that.
Okay, if there's no other changes to the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? So, move. Okay, Mr. Brotherton with the first and Mr. Robinson with the second.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Andy Graham.
Aye. Okay, now we're at public comments. Mrs. Parker. Sit right there in the hot seat.
The hot seat has to handle that. All right, hello, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Paige Parker. I have a son who is a student at RCS. So, I'll just let you know, I'll reference my notes here just in an attempt to stay on task, but also to not let my emotions or frustrations get the best of me. So, I'm here for two reasons. One, because I'm passionate about my child and every child at RCS's education. And two, because I won't be silenced because administration can't handle being questioned or challenged when they're wrong. I've had several exchanges with our superintendent, but I'll quickly summarize for everyone here. First, I provided feedback on his decision to exclude kindergarteners from the five-day return-to-school rule. I simply questioned why the it wasn't adopted, the 3A portion of the guidelines were not adopted for kindergarteners, which stated if children did not properly and consistently mask, they would be sent home for the remainder of their isolation period. It only applied to all other age students. Unfortunately, my child was a kindergartner who was asymptomatic, and he was excluded from school for 10 days while all other aged children were returned in five. The bulk of our exchanges, however, was around implementation of weekly testing. Unfortunately, I, for administration, I should say, I'm quite knowledgeable about COVID and COVID's impact on the workplace or schools for this purpose. Ultimately, my issue was once a parent revoked consent for weekly testing. Their child was excluded from the opportunity to test to stay or outbreak testing. I also questioned if this weekly testing was for all students regardless of vaccination status, given the high rate of COVID positives that are vaccinated and even boosted individuals. More than that, we were on a downward trend of COVID locally, which we continue to be. But I was assured RCS was not interested in getting in the business of COVID testing or public health, which I questioned why it was even given a consideration in the first place. Most recently, while our neighboring school districts were moving to mask optional, we were sent an updated consent form based off, or at least partially based off, my original feedback about consent for weekly testing versus consent for test to stay. I simply questioned while other schools were fighting for our children and giving them the option to wear masks or not, and removing mitigations after the TRO, we decided to increase those mitigations for our children. But nonetheless, it's since been put on hold. I say all of that to explain, but mostly because I'd like to know which email challenged you so much that you felt it necessary to file a complaint with my employer. While I'm quite certain you had many more important things to do, you thought the most important was filing a personal attack against me because I reached out with factual and research-based information. I will say this, had this unwarranted attempted attack on me been successful, which very well could have impacted my ability to provide for and support my family, this would be a bit of a different conversation. What you clearly didn't see in my email signature line is what I do. And as an employee of Human Resources, I'm quite certain I'm well aware of my employment policies, which includes the use of work email. What's also frustrating is the work that was created for an entire department to investigate this ridiculous claim. Rest assured, upon completion of that investigation, it was determined I did nothing wrong, but I knew that all along. I'm here because I am not and never will stand for myself or any other parent of a child at RCS to be silenced while fighting for their education and their experience within the school system. I'm curious if we turn in every parent who we disagree with. Perhaps that's why we have little to no parent involvement across RCS. What I should say and am happy to add is I've had nothing but great experiences with my son's school, his teacher, and the administration at Broadmeadow, and for that, I'm extremely thankful. I just wish I could say the rest about the administration over RCS. The one and only thing I will say that is addressed tonight is thank you for finally fighting for our children and giving them the option to wear masks or not. My son counted down the days until his opportunity to go to school and be able to see the faces of his classmates and his teacher. I can only hope this is the beginning of some normalcy back in our schools for these students that they so desperately need. And I personally look forward to the opportunity that I can sit on this board and continue to fight for these children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cuevas.
Hello, everyone. And those of you that don't know me, my name is Nelson Cuevas. I'm founder, CEO at Puttiadore Latino Center. We've been in Rancho for 20-plus years. I've sat around these terrible tables when Tranquino first came in and had seen rummaging action. And now I have the privilege to see Dr. Woods. Continuing the legacy of Rancho City Schools, making it a priority that the children and families of this community are well represented. So, with that said, I just came here to say that on behalf of the Latino community, and I didn't want to bring busloads because I didn't want it to look like we came to on a negative note. On the contrary, we came on a positive note. I have signatures here that were signed before decisions were made on behalf of parents, not only Latinos, but others in this community because Puttiadore has worked diligently, not only with the Latino community, but we've extended our services and our help to other populations in this community, making ourselves now a multicultural agency where we reach to everyone. You know, we don't deny anyone our daycare services, social services. I am a licensed counselor. Esther Alejandro is a licensed social worker. She also happens to be my wife. You know, she exercises her options of always wearing her mask. I choose to exercise mine. But, you know, we still have to sleep together. So, what I'm trying to say is congratulations on making a wise decision on making our district optional. And Latino community, I wanted the board to keep this just so that they know that there was people that are in favor and not just the Latinos. And again, it's not to make any noise. It's just to let you know that the decision was a great decision. And you all know that I'm for the Rancho City Schools. I'm pro Rancho City School. I'm pro district. I'm pro parents. But I go the extra mile when it comes to our children. I'm pro, pro, pro children. Hey, being a father who lost a child when he was 16, I've always made it my priority to go the extra mile for my kids. And I consider the students in Rancho my kids. Those were ten cultivators. We send 75 kids to the local schools, so we have access to over 150 parents on a daily basis. So, with that said, they wanted me to say thank you to all of you. And also, cultivators also has the optional. You know, we have to go through the CDC guidelines. We are state and federally funded. So, we too have to comply. And options is one of the things that we do. So, I brought a sample here because we're going to be dropping off these signs, these signed letters from the parents, those who want to choose to send their kids with masks or without masks. All we're asking is that the principals and staff respect the decisions made. My people, when I say my people, I say now the Latinos, they are undocumented. The majority in this community, let's not pretend that they're not. So, approaching you causes fear. They're not going to challenge the board together yet, superintendent, the administration, or the directors because of the fear of their legal status. But they have people like me, my wife, and others in Champaign. Then when we feel that it's time to come here, we come. You know, like I mentioned to Andy, we didn't want to make this a big deal. We didn't want to bring in Channel 3. We didn't want to bring in a boatload of people because that's unnecessary. I said, we don't need to do that. We can solve this as civilized, you know, professionals. So, I'm just going to give you guys what we use. And while we make sure that the kids, when they get on our buses, mom said mask, put the mask, we, right, we strongly encourage option. We just don't favor one side. We make sure that our kids are aware that they have the right to choose because we have to teach our children that this is a democracy. My ancestors come from communist countries. So, we know what freedom and options are and decisions to make decisions. So, I feel that this should be continued to push. And if anything is going to be encouraged, what should be encouraged is you have the right to choose. You know, and not lean on either side. As educators, I believe that the job of the educators is to teach. Let's leave the rest of the stuff to CDC and public health. That's their job. So, with that said, this is what we use. We'll be sending our kids. And we'll be monitoring. We're going to make sure that the choice to choose is not violated to any of our kids. And we'll leave it there, you know. Again.
Mr. Cuevas, your final answer.
Yeah, thank you. The pastor in me kicks in once.
I know. I just go ahead. Give you your card. So, thank you.
So, I'm glad you guys allowed me this. If you have any question, you guys know how to reach me. And again, thank you for the wise decision to bring option to our district.
Thank you.
We need to do another attendance.
And twelve. We've seen a note.
Thank you, Dr. Wood.
Six, ten, eight. How you doing?
Okay, how are you?
We were chatting. Yeah, we'll have this.
All right, we need to take another attendance really quick because we had somebody join. And otherwise, we won't be able to vote on anything else.
Okay.
Or at least recorded this. So, John Brotherton.
Here.
Moto Johnson.
Here.
Nikki Pettit.
Here.
Mitch Wilson.
Here.
Joe Robinson.
Here.
Tyler Wilson.
Here.
Andy Graham.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, item four is consent agenda.
You have to do number E.
So, item E, the form contract needs to be moved to the next item. And then we are removing.
Item H. We'll table item H.
Table item H.
And for the public out there, item H is not on the paper agenda, which is why we're tabling it. So.
Okay. All right. I'll make the motion, I guess. I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items, including personnel reports as submitted with the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated in the Illinois statutes and RCS board policy and procedures, including ratification of bills prepaid by the finance manager under Board Policy 4-50. And we will be removing items F and H.
E.
E and H.
E will be moved to a separate action.
Yep, will be moved. So, we won't be moving all those two items in the consent agenda. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Go ahead, Hannah.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Mitch Wilson.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Andy Graham.
Aye.
Okay. The next item would be the approval of the yearly contract with the Forum Fitness Center. If anybody has any questions, I'm going to let Dr. Woods.
Yeah, we can just call a vote if you want. Andy's not going to vote.
I cannot vote on that. So. Can I get a motion to approve the Forum Fitness contract?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Wilson, Mitch Wilson with the second. Mr. Moto Johnson with the second. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Hannah.
Hard to do this. Andy Graham.
I'm standing.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Moto Johnson.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Mitch Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, item number six. COVID mitigation plan, sir.
All right. So, board members, you should have a copy of what you're being asked to approve tonight. It is two pages, front and back, the four altogether. This is a revision of what we had at the start of the school year. And I'm just going to run through it quick, just to give you kind of a general update on COVID. This is what I had prepared for last week. And total positive cases that we had in the district. Also, some information on the school closures that we had and when they occurred for your reference. At no point did we have to close the entire district because of COVID. We did shift two school days to e-learning days earlier.
What's that? We have to let, you can talk before we vote.
Before we vote.
Yeah.
Okay. During, from January 4th to February 14th, which is following winter break. I know I was communicating this with the teachers or the board throughout the month, but the number of tests that we were doing and the number of total COVID cases was really becoming overwhelming for us as a school district to employ that. And it was at this time that we began to look at what other testing options we could have to bring in. As I believe it's in here later, is that we are not planning to move forward with shield testing at this time because we don't need to do that volume of testing at this point. This also, the graph will be better, but this is week by week, the number of school days we have, the number of tests we were doing, the number of positives, and how many positive tests per day. And you can really see that between January 10th and January 24th, we were peaking. I hope that was the peak. And we were having a very high number of daily cases. I think this graph, I see the graph better. Our highest single day was January 24th, when we had 34 positive COVID cases on one day. Since we had the snow days, the number of cases really started to decline. And that is, that was mirroring what was being seen in Champaign County. We are now on school day number nine with zero positive tests that we tested. So, this graph is just the test that we did. We have had COVID positive cases during these last nine school days, but not ones that we have tested and not nearly at the volume that we were seeing before. So, at this point, I'm more comfortable also with what we have in the COVID mitigation plan that we're putting forward. And again, the volume of testing. And again, the volume of testing that we were doing is significantly lower to where we are back in the single digits on daily testing, which I know makes Hannah happy, cuz she's the one who has to enter every test, okay? So again, I had this all prepared for last week, and it's been another week. So why change COVID mitigations now? At this time, as of last week, and now, COVID mitigations can be a local decision. During the month of January, even with all of the mitigation efforts we had in place as a school district, the virus was contracted by our staff and students at the highest no rates in two years. During the week of February 7th, when we had the same mitigations in place as we did in the prior five weeks, we only had three positive tests. And we have not had a COVID positive test since February 7th that we have administered in the district. So the main changes in the document that you're approving are that masks are strongly recommended, asymptomatic individuals may not be excluded from school, and testing of unvaccinated employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. And there's some minutia in that one. Those employees no longer need to do the weekly testing. And what supports the decision that we made, so we, the plan was we were gonna start on January 14th. It was on January 15th, February 15th, that the Joint Committee on Administrative Rules voted unanimously not to extend the IDPH rules. So at that point, even if we were still following the governor's executive orders, we would not be able to exclude a student from school who was asymptomatic, or a student who refused to wear a mask at that point, because those rules were what was giving us the authority to do that. I should say for 48 hours, we can exclude a child for 48 hours, we can require a child to wear a mask at school. That's not the direction we're going as a district. The also then lasts the 17th, so last week after we would have met as a board, the appellate court decision came out, which again supported the direction that the board was moving into. Masks, so a few things of note is masks may be required when returning from COVID positive case for, for two school days. It's gonna depend on, again, we haven't actually had to do this yet with a student, because it hasn't, we haven't had a student case. But depending on the timeline of when the student comes back, we could require that student to continue to wear a mask for up to two days, but we wouldn't be excluding the child for the full five days, which is where we were a couple of weeks ago. We may be required, pending classroom circumstances, accommodations for individuals. What I can tell you is at this point, I have received no requests for accommodations for, from any students or any staff members, so that is likely not going to be an issue. COVID positive students will be excluded per typical medical exclusion rules, and may be required to wear a mask for two school days upon return to school. So that's really where we are sitting with things. I do want to address, cuz I think most of the board is aware of this, cuz there was a lot of communication with the board prior to the meeting last week. It was not prudent for us to move immediately following the temporary restraining order to going mask optional. That was the advice of our district's legal counsel, and we had an obligation to bargain in good faith with both of our employee unions. A lot of districts did not do that, and are in legal trouble at this point with their unions. And so we are not in that situation. I know Rachel's probably gonna come up and share that they aren't happy about the decision and our timeline, but we did wanna make sure we were following all proper steps as far as what we are allowed to do with our employee groups. I can tell you that the reason some districts still are mask required is because their associations are not, primarily because their associations are not allowing any flexibility on that. So I do wanna make sure everyone's aware of that. Some things to discuss are local determinations for masking. Is there a metric, this was something requested by the association, is there a metric for when we should determine if masks should resume? So the local school district can enact its own rules that would require masking. And so the board could decide that if there is a certain number of, there, there could be something that would trigger masks being required in, say, a classroom, a school, or the whole district. The board could also say, no, we're not going to do that, okay? The shield testing, as I said earlier, is we are not going to implement shield testing at this time. We are on, what did they call me, call us, we are on.
Standby.
Standby? Yeah, we were ready to launch, but now we're on standby. In case we were to get to the point where we're doing hundreds of tests a week, again, we would be able to implement that. We have all the materials and everything's ready to go for that, but we are not planning to do that. I honestly think we're probably at a point, give it a little more time, we may decide that we're not doing any testing at all, is an option that we can look at. So we've done 22 tests in three school days this week. So we can manage it, no problem right now. But again, it's the only medical test that I am aware of a school district ever performing on children. We do not normally do medical testing on children. We take temperatures, and we give kids bags of ice. So when I make comments like we're not in the public health business, or the healthcare providing business, that's what I mean. We are not, we are not, that's not what we do. This was a result of the circumstances we had in trying to get kids back into school on time. My recommendation on the discussion items is that we follow the, there is a sentence in here in the second paragraph here at the top, that says, "The superintendent is authorized by the school board to make such changes as needed without immediate action by the board, but the board reserves the right to reauthorize, reject, and/or review the superintendent's changes to this plan." Which this is something we should have had in it at the beginning of the year, and we didn't. But it's basically, you know, we, the board can call a meeting whenever they want, if there are rules changes that you want to have enacted. But at the same time, I think we need to give the flexibility, so if the health department comes along, and we've got some major big deal happening that I'll get directed by the health department possibly, and we will start to enact it, and then the board can overrule it or support it, so. But the only thing you're being asked to vote on, I'll just be clear, is this plan, which does not include these two items on here.
Ms. Palmer, before we start discussing, sorry, it was good, it was better after you talked in. Ms. Palmer is our president of our teachers union, for those of you who don't know, and Ms. Kaiser in the back is vice president? Good.
Alright, good evening. Like Andy said, my name is Rachel Palmer, and I am the president of RCSEA. I'm here tonight to talk about the board's decision for making masking optional. As the assoc, as the association president, it is my job to represent our group as a whole, regardless of my individual beliefs. On Tuesday, February 8th, I attended a meeting held after school to discuss the topic of optional masking with administration and our association. I was encouraged to reach out to members of our association to hear their viewpoints on this topic, and to try to get a sense of what they thought. On Wednesday, February 9th, I attended another meeting with administration and our association to further discuss this topic. At this meeting, our association clearly stated to Dr. Woods that at this time, we're in no position to make a decision on whether masking should become optional or not, and that we would like to wait until a ruling comes out, and we have more time to speak to members. That night, we were informed that the board was directing the superintendent of their decision to make mask optional. This then prompted the association to put in an abandon to impact bargain this decision. The association met with administration and Mr. Graham on Saturday afternoon. We reviewed the COVID mitigations. It is very disappointing that the board did not take into consideration our input on waiting. Our association feels like we have a good relationship with Dr. Woods, administration, and the board. But this, but this decision felt like it was made without taking into account what feedback we provided. The association has not taken a stance on this issue, but we would hope, moving forward, our voices will be heard, and we can continue to work together to ensure the safety of students and staff in our buildings. We hope the recommendations we made at Impact Bargaining will be heard and incorporated into our MOU. Thanks for your time.
Excuse me, when you said that the board made the decision, when was that made? You mean board as us? I was never included in that.
I did not speak with you, but I spoke, we had a.
I'm just letting you know that, I was never included in that. And I do see a lot of things on, on this board book thing, and some of the things that I see on my emails that says, board members made that decision, that is not true. Just so you know.
Okay, thanks.
And ultimately, the decision is being voted on tonight. So, but I can, I do want to address that I can, when I receive direction from a majority of the board, as superintendent, I can begin to act on that, and that's what's.
So it's just the majority of the board, no matter if you ask all eight, seven of us or not, is what you're saying?
I didn't, I didn't speak to all seven board members, or six.
I'm just saying, you know, because when, when you say board members, I'm included in the board, at least I think I am.
You are.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't really know. And I'm kinda glad that she spoke and said what she had to say. I'm definitely glad Ms. Parker got up and spoke and said what she had to say. I mean, I just want the public and everybody to know, sometimes things are being said and being done without the knowledge of me. Because I feel the same way. I want what's best for our kids, and what's most safe for our kids, and for the teachers included.
So I'm gonna say it, Moto, your attorney directed us not to communicate directly with you. So that's why you're not being.
That's, that's under a different situation, if it, if it deals with the public and the, and something to do with the board, I don't, I don't.
Your attorney told me directly not to communicate with you.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask, I'll find out.
Okay. So I wanna go through my thought process for this whole thing, and of course, when the original ruling, TRO, came out, of course, immediately Scott and I talked a little bit, and it didn't affect us. And as things started to change, I started to talk to the board. We had some board members that wanted to make sure that we went with the high school district. We had some board members that I talked to, said yes, they were in favor of optional, no matter what the circumstance was. And we had some board members that, after we spoke originally, are for optional, but wanted to, wanted to wait to, to hear what everybody had to say. And I understood that. But what I also understood is that we had a strong majority of this board that wanted to go mask optional. I've been met for mask optional since the governor declared the mask mandate on. I, I think it's a, it's an option for that person. We started hearing from our attorneys and through other avenues that the, the appellate court ruling wasn't going to come out anytime soon. At first, we heard it was gonna be by Tuesday or Wednesday, Thursday, that first week, then we heard that it was gonna be by the 17th, then we heard it could be longer, that there is no deadline. So for us to wait, you know, if we would have waited, we'd have been sitting here today still in masks with our kids. But instead, we've been off for two weeks. So I realize I didn't make every single one of you happy, and I apologize for that, but I felt like we had a strong majority of the board that wanted to go mask optional. And so I conveyed that information to Dr. Woods, and, and he made the decision on what I felt that I had from you guys.
And, and there also, I, so the board knows, one of the reasons to delay until that following Monday, once I received the direction, was in part, this wasn't something that was pushed out. I mean, this part of it really was about whether we get accommodations in place and have some plans, but we did need to give the opportunity to give the union, we needed to give the union an opportunity to do what they did. And I understand why they did that, and I respect that decision that they had, because we do have to continue to maintain good relationships. And there are definitely some employees that are not happy with this right now.
And I will report to you guys, my biggest fear was the distraction. We had had at least one family, if not more, coming to the school and threatening, threatening to not put a mask on and not ready to leave, and that was just gonna get more and more prevalent as the days went on, and as more and more school districts in the area went to mask optional. As we sit today, there's about 12% of the school districts in the state that are still masking everybody. There's, you know, 86 or 88% of the schools in the state are mask optional. So that's where we sit today.
When I'm looking through, through this here, are you guys trying to water fountains back home?
Oh God, did I not take that out? Which page are you on? Yeah, we've had the water fountains on for some time.
You have?
Yes, that was earlier this year. Yeah, we got guidance from the health department that that didn't matter, basically.
So Scott, you wanted, so.
So you're not just the bottle fillers, you actually have.
Yeah, we have a regular fountain.
Scott, so are you asking us to approve this draft policy, or do you want us to approve?
I'm asking you to approve the draft policy, I guess these items to discuss are, we can.
But you have a version of that in there, right, that's superintendent.
Yes, the superintendent, that's the second paragraph.
So that first bullet point is covered in the document that we're approving?
Yes, and I, and I, again, I guess that'll be clear, is this is not something I anticipate happening.
Right.
At this point, you know, when we put this together, I'm talking about the reapplying of masks. The only, I, I, it would have to be a clear order with legal authority for it to happen.
Good.
In my opinion. But who knows, crazier things have been happening during this process, so. But also, I, I don't think there's much to discuss at this point on shield testing, cuz we just don't need the testing.
Does anybody else have any further questions or anything? If not, I'll make, oh, do you have some? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the draft document as presented.
I second.
You guys, like, we go roll calls, please Hannah.
John Brotherton.
Hi.
Moto Johnson.
I don't understand it, nay. I don't, I.
He said nay.
I, I.
Okay, sorry. Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Mitch Wilson.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Andy Graham.
Aye.
Now, a much less exciting topic is the school calendar revisions, which is complicated school calendar I've ever seen this year. So this on the screen, what you see, board members, and it's in your, you do have a packet, board members, if you wanna follow through with the slides. This is showing you what days have been altered. So at this point, we've changed seven school days, if I'm showing this correctly. The weather has not been helping us lately. So the only thing that's really an action item to, well, before I go on, I will say I got quite a bit of feedback about President's Day. And I know the board knows this, but we do not make these decisions in a bubble. It's not just me deciding to make these calendar changes, this is, calendar changes involve conversations with the associations and building administration. And yeah, I, I definitely got feedback that President's Day is a holiday, and we should not have any learning day on President's Day, but at this point, it's already happened. I do wanna reassure the board that it was perfectly legal that we did it. There are some federal holidays where we would have a problem if we had a, and attendance day on that day, but President's Day is not one of them, and we had it pre-approved. So really, at this point, the calendar changes, and it's, oh boy, it's long, is really we're approving, moving, making up the February 4th snow day on May 20th, which was originally scheduled as a teacher institute day, okay? February 19th that we just had, we will reschedule that to, unfortunately, Tuesday, May 31st. So we will now have a school day following, and what that's gonna mean is Tuesday, May 31st, at this point, will be, I think that's on the next slide, Tuesday, May 31st will be the, I better say this right, Tuesday, May 31st is now the last day of student attendance, and it will be early dismissal day. And Friday, May 27th is now a regular school day, which originally it was an early dismissal day. We will have a work day on June 1st, but this does not require the board to do anything. June 1st will be that institute day that we moved. June 1st will be that institute day that we moved from February 20th. So I guess in summary, we're getting the right amount of school days in. We can't take any more e-learning days, so if I have to cancel school for tomorrow, it's a snow day and the school year goes one more day. So we don't have any e-learning days left.
Is that why we couldn't have an e-learning day on the 18th?
Correct. The, the other one, well, we technically could have, but we already scheduled the 21st for our last e-learning day. I think that's what, we, yeah, we were, and the other, the other thing we discovered is the way we were doing our e-learning days, the junior high was in a, I've told some parents this, this is going to be a discussion item before next school year for sure, is how we use e-learning days.
Did you guys have school on Monday?
This Monday, we had an e-learning day on February 21st.
I know, but didn't, were you registered?
No, it was, we took Presidents' Day.
We were originally going to have President's Day off.
Let's get a different e-learning day to make up one of the days from earlier.
I have a question on that. On that Monday that we had off, you said, or at least I got emails from, from the schools that kids were going to be getting, the kids that weren't doing the e-learning, were going to get packets from their teachers. And not only did I not for my son, but there was a number of parents that expressed that they went to the school and the teachers did not have nothing set up for any of their kids either. And there was quite a few people that expressed that opinion. I didn't know if you got that feedback or not.
I didn't get that feedback, yep.
And they were kind of upset about that.
And that's why I think we, we've got to clean it up before we have any e-learning days next year. If this was all digital, we wouldn't have that problem, but we would still have the problem of getting devices home for the elementary school kids. And part of what happened for this last Monday was the two days off, we weren't planned for that. So some tutors just didn't have the materials sent home yet. And we had kid, if a kid was absent from school on Wednesday, they wouldn't have gotten anything, but I'm sorry to hear, though, there were parents who showed up at school in the day.
Exactly. And that's what they were wondering, why they get an email in or saying that they were supposed to be getting something and they didn't, they didn't get nothing. So they, some of these parents said that they had to make arrangements, either skipping work because of the timetable of 10 to 12 and/or certain different things, you know, which caused them conflict in their life. I'm just...
I got that feedback too.
I did.
Was trying to do better next time.
Well, I mean, we've just got to, so the junior high, it's not as much of a problem at all because they all have Chromebooks, they take them home every night, the teachers can push out all the materials through the Chromebooks and did not have that in place for the elementary schools. So...
No other questions? And can we have a motion to approve the calendar revisions for 2021, 2022 school year?
I'll make the motion to approve the revision.
Okay. Tyler Wilson, the motion, can we have a second?
I second it.
Mr. Johnson, second. We can just do all in favor, can't we?
Yes.
All in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, motion carries seven, nothing.
We have the chance to click all the buttons. All right, information items, there are, they're in your board packet, but I want to go through facilities project updates. This is one that tends to be of interest to the community. Remember, we voted in October, September, October on the canopy awnings at the schools. I am unfortunately reporting to you that they are not even started on those projects yet. Continues to be delayed due to material supply issues, but it, everything we're seeing is it should, there shouldn't be any issue with it getting done during this fiscal year. But we hope to have it done in the fall. Myna Thompson is completed, finalizing bills right now. And we're going to discuss the property transfer in closed session. Scoreboards at JW Ater, I just want you to know, I've been collecting bids on projects as they range from $9,000 to $14,000. We do have a very generous donor who's going to pick up part of the tab on that and I can share that information with you later. But we're putting in a new scoreboard and adding a second scoreboard in the main gym at Ater.
Did you?
Yeah, I've got work on this right now.
Here we go, hold that guy.
Bid preparation, and actually, I sent out first on the parking lot at JW Ater, it's called JW Ater Site Improvements is what the bid is called. So that'll be published in the News Gazette soon. But we did post it on our Facebook page and per feedback from the board, we have a link on our website to the bids. Hannah is calling several local vendors.
As I say, if anybody has a local vendor that they'd like to see, get an opportunity to bid on that, please get that to Dr. Woods or Hannah.
And I would expect we'll get a lot of bids on a parking lot project. That's not the case necessarily for roofs and gutters, because those tend to be more specialized for school buildings. But, but we're working on that. So the next round of bidding that's going to come out is doors at East Lawn and then roofs and gutters at East Lawn. And we're going to do an add-on to that one at East Lawn to do gutters for Broad Meadow. And so as a reminder, we're kind of in a process of trying to redo all of the roofs right now. And when we redo the roofs, we need to redo the gutters. And so that's where we are with those. But that goes through that whole open bid process. We had an accident at Broad Meadow, I'm going to show you some pictures. And then when do we get multiple quotes and not get multiple quotes? So this is the, it's a little small from where you're sitting, but this is the, we got the layout from our architect on the parking lot. So this is Urbana Avenue down here. And it'll come in, this little dotted line is the boundary between the park district and the city schools. There were some questions I saw on Facebook about our parking lot and whether it would interfere with the disc golf course, and so it does not. So we shared that information with the Ranhtoe Park District. It's, there's, they're over here, basically. I do want to make sure that all of you know, when you're talking with people, why are we adding a parking lot? And I wish I didn't pay attention to what people post on Facebook, but I do. It is not a parking lot for school district administration. I just need to be very clear about it. That parking lot that's right there is much closer to my office than where that new parking lot is going to be. Okay? So this is a parking lot for the staff at JW Ater, which includes the largest staff in our district and all of our transportation employees and our maintenance employees. And the goal, and I want to make sure we have some mockups, we've been meeting with the village, we met today, is that if we can get the additional staff parking that right now is on Wabash Avenue into a combination of this, the existing central office parking lot, and then the new parking lot out back, is that we will be able to redo Wabash Avenue so that we have a much safer student drop-off, student pickup zone. So there's another layer to it. And that's, I did share this before, but it was nice, we got some drawings of what that could look like. So you would be, right now, you know, Wabash is four lanes wide, even though it's not used, it's a four-lane road. We would be dividing it, I mean, not us specifically, but working with the village, to put in a median, which would likely have trees and fencing, so that we don't have all the kids that dart back and forth in traffic out there. And it would be essentially a two-lane drop-off of one way in this direction. And so we did meet with the village today and, and talk about that, because I think the village has some other improvement work planned, in the works for Wabash Avenue.
That's Wabash?
Yep.
It's going to be a four-lane?
It already is wide enough to be a four-lane.
Really?
Yeah.
It's going to make it real nice.
So, and, and you know, I think when you're dropping off and picking up at Ater after school, it's four lanes, sometimes five. And there are people stopped everywhere. And so it's a, they'll have to do some more engineering work on it to make sure it makes sense, but it should make it safer.
I'd like to see that one.
The, the what?
The four-lane.
Oh, yeah. Well, but even with this, just so you see, so you would come down and this is going whatever direction that is, that's east. There would be a pull-off lane that could diverge into two different lanes over here one way, so that parents can drop off, pick up in that area. And then we would potentially close Wabash on this stretch here with barricades at drop-off and pickup time, so that it's not all of that traffic here. But they're not going to widen the road at all.
Really?
So they'd be taking out some of the parking that's there.
Think about the...
No parking, you're just...
Right now, there's a lot of...
Oh, you're wiping out the parking. Oh, okay.
And there's more than enough parking on Wabash. And it's, but it is part of a safety plan and, and you know, we've done the Safe Reps to Schools plans with the other, one at a time with the other buildings. I don't have an update on Pleasant Acres right now, but again, I just wanted to make sure you know, we're not just adding a parking lot. There's a reason. We know, we have talked about it in board meetings. The reason is ultimately to help clean up traffic on Wabash. And those of you that have had parents at Ater now or in recent years knows it is a headache right now. We had an accident at Broad Meadow on one of our, during the big snowstorm, where it closed for three days, unfortunately. I don't know how much force it takes to make a hole in the building, but it happened. And I just want to make sure you know that. So we're in the process of doing that with our insurance company. It was definitely an accident, but as you can see, it went all the way through. It'll require replacing masonry and the windows, and those are not inexpensive windows. So this is my favorite slide of the night. From Lemons, we are looking at lemonade, I'm saying this. So we are also, instead of just replacing with, with the current wall that we have, we are looking into redoing that classroom space and creating access to the outside from that classroom. So what you're seeing here is, what would it be like if that was just a collapsible wall that could open up into the outside? It would fit in, there's some more drawings of it. Quotes, I, I, I thought I had like four slides of pictures for this. But what we're also looking at doing is creating more green space back here, which was already something that was being discussed in, in facilities as far as the, because we have to resurface that back parking lot at some point, so it all kind of fits and we, it's not going to look like this, it's not going to be the entire length of the wall, because it can't be because of our HVAC. But I really did have multiple other shots, looked really cool, and I don't know where they went.
Having the Chicago skyline in the background.
That is the best part. Yes, you can...
Future, future.
I think actually...
Way into the future.
The Chicago skyline's in the background on these two, so. But that's just the software, so. But ultimately, thankfully, that was a, nobody was in the room when that happened. And there, oh, there it is, there's the inside shots of it. It can't be that whole wall because we have to put our HVAC units on that wall. But we really do, I can, I can say that if we were doing new construction, we would be looking at doors to the outside from our classrooms anyway. That's pretty normal right now in new construction spaces. So we're looking at how a classroom could be used and teacher could go in and out of that classroom. So, anyway, nothing's happening yet, I just thought I'd show that.
Okay.
Quotes, so you want me to be done, Andy? I know your daughter just walked in. Because you're going where? We have a meeting. You're wearing an orange shirt. All right. We did talk early in the year about getting quotes, and I want to give you an update and share my recommendation with you. We've been trying to get three quotes on all projects over $400 this year. It is causing us significant delays because a lot of our vendors aren't interested in projects that are that small. And we're just not getting the three quotes. So I've been working with our facilities director, well, the example I think is a good one, is we have a storage shed roof on a building adjacent to Ater. We have struggled to get three quotes for it because it's a relatively small project. It's a commercial project, but it's not a big commercial project. And companies are not wanting to deal with the prevailing wage because they have to, their profits are down essentially when they have to deal with the prevailing wage. So we have gotten it done, we got enough quotes. It's been, it's taken us four or five months, though, to get the quotes we wanted to get. So my recommendation is that, I'm, we're going, I'm telling, directing Shannon to shift on a non-emergency project, that we would start at a $2,500 threshold, so they're bigger with the vendors. We're going to contact at least three vendors and more when practical, which is what we've been doing. But we can't sit around and wait for vendors to actually come in and give us the quotes always. We've had multiple vendors, they'll schedule and then never show up. It's just like trying to get a project done on your own house. And we at some point need to move forward. We wouldn't do this at emergency needs. So for instance, two hot water heaters failed at Ater, we aren't going out to bid for that, we're going out, we're buying hot water heaters and we're installing them. But that is where we are with the quotes right now. So you, this is where you usually chime in on this.
What I was going to say, like, that's, I totally understand where you're coming from on all that side of things. And I think just something that I've tried to portray to you and Shannon is trying to use local contractors as, as much as possible. And I, I understand, you know, they might be busy or, you know, they might have other projects that delay our project, but just trying to use local companies when possible. You know, and even moving that up to $2,500, you know, before you have to get that many quotes. If you could just relay that message, you know, let's try to stay with some of our local guys as much as we can, you know, the companies that give us tax dollars, you know, back. But if, if we're in a crunch and somebody's busy and we have to go to Champaign-Branagh somewhere else...
And we are, yeah, and we are definitely still doing that. I just, Shannon wanted me to make sure the board was aware because it, it has been challenging for her at times to get all the quotes. And I keep telling her, just document that you're trying.
Where are the bids being? Do I put out that? Where's people can see the bids?
So the, a bid is different from us just getting a quote for a general maintenance project. The bid, which is the, the parking lot, that's a bid project, because it's for...
Well, I mean, I'm just, unless I misunderstood, you were talking about $400 unless, and you were getting three bids. How does, how does three people know about these bids?
So we do have a list of local vendors that we use.
Because I know a person that does HVAC. And he's local and he lives in Ranhtoe, so his tax dollars will definitely come back to Ranhtoe. And he's good at what he does. I'm just saying, just for future reasons, at least let him know.
And Mitch is, and has been forwarding names to Shannon and we're building a list. And we've also consulted with the chamber in town to get lists of local contractors. And she is calling them first. That is what she is supposed to be doing at this time.
So that's what I, I would encourage you to do, Moto, like, if you've got a list of guys, whether it's HVAC, plumbing, electrical, whatever, if you know some of those, those local guys, just email Shannon their name and their contact number if you can, if you can find a contact number or...
Yeah, I definitely got his contact number.
But just do that, because, you know, we talked a lot about, you know, we do have a, a lot of contractors here in Ranhtoe and the surrounding communities and try to use them if possible instead of sending everything to Champaign-Branagh.
And on the parking lot projects, so something that, after feedback from board members, and we've informed our architect of this, the architect does even a parking lot, I'm always amazed that an architect does a parking lot, but is, Hannah has a list of vendors that wants the bid is public for that project, that she's going to call them individually, right? That's what we talked about. And so the companies that we know of, they aren't just going to find it in the newspaper one day. We're going to make sure that we've, that we've tried to let them know that they can bid on it if they want. So on those big projects especially.
But it's basically off of who she picks to, who she picks to choose to call.
She has a list that we've gotten between our architect and Shannon that has provided it to her.
And whatever Shannon...
Shannon's not, Hannah's not choosing who she calls. We told her who to call. So, but yeah, if there are more, yeah, I mean, and you can ask Hannah if you want to see it, she can provide you with who she's contacting.
So if Shannon's got something that goes up to $2,500, right? Let's say she's got something that's only $1,500, she's going to work off her list. But if it's something that's going to be $5,000 or $10,000 and it has to go out to bid and then we have to decide on who gets that wins that bid, basically.
You meaning who gets to decide that?
We will, so if a project is big enough to go out and bid, number one, most companies that are able to do the work and bid on it, they will find out through a service once we put the bid out. They, they have somebody solely devoted to their staff to find bids of local schools and other entities that are putting out things to bid. If it's a smaller project, there's anything about the bid, that's up to staff to decide. And, but it's, well, we are basically telling them as board, they need to get multiple prices or multiple checks before they say, okay. Scott has a spending authority that he's allowed to spend without our approval. Anything above that spending authority is going to be a bid process anyways. So what he's telling us tonight is he had instructed Shannon that anything over $400, that anything over $400, she needed to bring three quotes to him before he signed a purchase order. Now what he's telling us that is anything at $2,500 or less, she doesn't have to get three quotes because they're having trouble getting three quotes. Anything over $2,500 before he signs a purchase order or whoever he's directed to sign a purchase order won't sign it if they don't have three price. Is that...
That's what I mean.
Okay, okay. So does that make it a little easier?
And the bid amount is either going to be $25,000 or $50,000 when it goes through the process with the architect. That's the limit on the formal bid process. So for us, that's, that's usually something like a parking lot or a roof. Most anything else, you know, on that list I have for you is gonna be doors at East Lawn, and we've got $100,000 budgeted for that, so it'll be over the $50,000 threshold on that, so... But yeah, I mean, I, we're definitely trying to make sure we work with local vendors when it's practical and feasible, and if you have anyone to share with us, please do that. All right. All right, no more public comment?
No. And? Or superintendent comments? I just will let you guys know, I probably won't stay. Closed session shouldn't be too long. I'm aware of what Mr. Woods has, but I'll probably leave. But I will share, and Caitlin can attest to this, I heard that it is very slick outside on the sidewalks when you go. So I got a text from her mother to make sure she's okay. But yeah, it's very slick, so please be careful. Could somebody please help Nikki out to the car?
I think I see people.
Huh?
I think I see people.
I'll help her.
Okay, okay, so I will tell you that, and if anybody has anything out of, out of closed session, please call me. I appreciate everything, and I appreciate all the hard work that the union has done, that the administration has done, and hopefully we are moving towards, would you say more normal? A little more normalcy, don't you say this? Normalcy, and, and our teachers and our administrators are worried about educating our kids and not worrying about who's had COVID in the last 10 days. So that's, that's my piece for tonight, so.
Did we skip over this media thing? Were we supposed to?
No, we don't, it was just some information I had.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else?
I do.
Okay.
Rather long thing, I'm gonna read it so I don't lose my train of thought. I've been thinking a lot about the last board meeting and what was said by Deborah and Moise regarding how board members should act, how we need to do better, show respect, and actually live up to what we said we would do when we were elected. So I look back to see exactly what it was I said I wanted to accomplish if I were to be elected. I stated I wanted to be involved in as many groups and/or activities where approving the school was the focus of the group. I said I would invite parents to more school board meetings, and I said I wanted to be involved in groups. I said I would try to bridge the school's connection with the community by making myself available and inviting people to talk to me about their concerns. I have a couple of quick points I'd like to share because I feel a lot of the comments that were said were directed toward me specifically, but in a very passive-aggressive way. My first point is, I was not happy with the way the mass situation was handled, and I had made it known to both Dr. Woods and Andy. And I want to do my due diligence and represent the minority voice on this board. I am the only woman, I am black, and I am disabled. And although I do agree with the decision that was ultimately made, I do wish that everyone's voice, opinion, voice and opinion could have been heard rather than making such a fast decision. In my opinion, the email didn't need to be sent out so quickly, and we had time. I felt like we, as a board, missed out on an opportunity to show that we are willing to work together as a team. I feel like we missed the opportunity to talk and listen to one another, one another. We missed the opportunity to show that we had the entire community in mind, not just a select few that were fortunate enough to know someone high in the ranks. The second point that I'd like to make is, I've asked community members like Mr. Goldson to be a part of our SEWG group, which has many subgroups. Many of these subgroups focus on things people have mentioned they want to see changed or addressed within the school. I've reached out to teachers to ask their opinions on situations. I've reached out to parents, I've reached out to students. I'm not sure about anyone else on this board, but I know that me, my children, and my husband have a diverse group of friends, so I'm not always talking to the same people or people that have the same beliefs as me or people that even look like me. My point in mentioning these very, these two very different situations is that, is to say that I am doing what I said I wanted to do if I were to be elected. I am talking to the community and also to the board. I am talking to teachers and students. I am a part of several groups within the community. So when I politely ask someone to be quiet because I cannot hear during a presentation, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm trying to show respect by stating and listening to what they have to say. The group was presenting to a board, to our board and to the community about pretty important hot topics. In my opinion, it was disrespectful to talk during this pres, during their presentation. During the last meeting, Deborah spoke about honoring your father and mother. My father served on this board for many years, and I think about him often, especially when I'm in this room. I think about how he would handle certain situations or what he might say or what his advice to me might be. My dad would always teach me about this wonderful world in such a very good way. I remember a particular piece of advice he gave me, and I must have only been probably about the fifth or sixth grade. He told me that I had to be respectful. However, he told me to only show respect when someone is respecting you. That has stuck with me throughout my entire lifetime. My dad showed me how to stand up for myself and for others and to speak up when something isn't right. I'm not a lot, I'm a lot like my father. I'm a lot more like my father than I am my mother. I say that because my dad had a temper. So I want to be perfectly clear when I say this last part. I am most certainly honoring my mother and especially my father when I don't stand for people approaching me in a dark parking lot when I'm by myself. I am honoring my mother and especially my father when I stand up for myself, when someone calls me out of my name, makes a racial slur at me, or puts their hands on me. And I will continue to stand up for myself if this happens because I am a cheek and I am Nikki Pettit first and foremost, and then I am a board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. And I will tell you this, just for you, Ben and Emily Cheek are some of the most influential people in my life, and I love both of them dearly, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
So... And now we need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
We need to read the stipulation. Do you have that, John?
No, it's on the screen, that's all we need.
I, I...
Okay, I'll...
He's got it.
Okay.
The employment compensation discipline performance or dismissal of a specific employee, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in the park, recreational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, educational setting, or volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, remain to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wages Increase Transparency Act may not be in closed session and shall be an open to the public and posted and held in accordance with the Act 5 of ILCH 120-2C1.
I would have been fine if you just read it a second. Two more things, though, we've got to do.
I like to talk.
We're not done, all right, anyway.
So I, collective negotiation matters between public body and its employees that represent or deliver issue concerning salary status for one or more classes in favor, the state of a price, a sales release, a whole month later.
That'd be awesome, all right.
Thank you, guys. So we need a closed session vote. Anybody call me if you guys need anything after closed session.
That was the motion.
We need a second.
I second it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brotherton made the motion?
No, Graham Robinson.
Oh, okay. I think I'm walking since you read it. Mr. Brotherton?
It is super loud, like...
We're still in open session.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Pettit?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
All right, and for the record, we are gonna go into closed session. There's no action after closed session, so I'm gonna turn off the recording. I think I turned off the recording.
What colors the mic have to be?
It's definitely not off yet.